Looks nice, though.
It is. Yeah, it's a switch machine. Whereas I'm probably going with something like you have, as I want something I can take to a meeting.
And write on?
Write on it or make notes easily without necessarily a big laptop. But we'll see.
It looks really compact.
It is. It's more compact, but just with a bigger screen. But it doesn't flip right around.
Counsel, if we can have your attention, please? If I could have everybody's attention, please? If I could, please have everybody's attention? So we would, uh... If I could have everybody's attention, please? We would like to call our last meeting of this council to order. Before we do so, I want to just thank all of our partners who report on and broadcast our meetings. And thank everybody here who is tonight in attendance and watching from home. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 1, Adoption of Minutes, a motion by Councilors Brunie and Myers, resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting of 2018-09-24 be approved?
All in favor. Carried.
Under Agenda Item 2, I'm not sure if there's any councillors who wish to address Item under 2?
Counsel Myers.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clerk. Yeah, I just, Counsel Butler and I had kind of looked at doing a bit of a resolution for this evening just around some comments, I guess, in request of council, looking forward on the election for the future, for four years from now. And I think that the Clerk maybe has some information to share. He'll have a formal report in months to come or weeks to come. But tonight, I think that everyone is acutely aware that there was a turnout of forty point three percent, which was a tad disappointing when you think of that there's only forty percent of our community who are actively engaged in going out and casting that vote, because there were a lot of really great things that the city did this time. Curbside voting, voting from home. I know residents in Ward Two took advantage of a lot of that. So I just wanted to somehow or other get this flag that maybe there's a committee of council that would be struck going forward, that would get input from the community, but we're not quite there yet, because I think the final report has to yet come. So, Mr. Clerk, if you again wanted to comment on anything relative to our conversations, that was what it was.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. Certainly, we'll be doing a wind-up report that will be early in the new year to the new council, talking about the election. Obviously, we would always hope the turnout could be as high as it possibly is. We always look at ways that we can make voting more accessible. A little difficult to forecast what that will look like four years hence, especially with advances in technology, although as we see, technology sometimes causes problems as well. But that will be forthcoming, and I'm sure the new council will consider the comments you've made tonight.
Thank you, and I'm sure that there will be old councillors that will get in touch with their councillors and bring it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Under Item 3, Declarations of Pecanary Interest?
Seeing none.
Under Item 4, Approve Agendas Presented, a motion by Councilors Brunie and Hollingsworth, resolved that the agenda and addendum for 2018-11-05, City Council Meeting, as presented, be approved?
All in favor. Carried.
And under Section 5, Proclamations and Delegations, 5.1, Community Recognition Award Presentation. Chris Ru, the Chair of the Cultural Advisory Board, is in attendance to introduce this year's Community Recognition Award recipient.
Welcome to council, Mr. Ru.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Provenciano, members of council, and invited guests. It's with great pleasure that I present our recipient for 2018 Community Recognition Award. But first, I'd like to talk about Stone Cradle by Tim Bartholomew. That's a wonderful art that's located just outside the mayor's office. It's called Stone Cradle, and Stone Cradle is a representation of our identity, diversity of our community, culture, combining the past, present, and future. The rock symbolizes the relics of the geological past, which has shaped our Canadian Shield into some of the most breathtaking scenery around. These rock formations stand tall, rugged, holding within them the power of the past. The red ocher pictographs are legendary evidence of our past cultural heritage. The Paragon Falcon symbolizes our present culture. The word paragon means traveler or wanderer, an appropriate name for a bird so widely distributed. Our heritage, too, has become multicultural with people from all walks of life. Presently, the Paragon Falcon has become a symbol of success, as it began to reappear after almost being wiped out by the use of DDT. This holds true to our heritage today. If we, as a people, don't start preserving the process now, a prosperous future cannot be secured. This incredible recovery of the Paragon Falcon can be attributed to the long, hard work and dedication of many concerned. This eye-opener should encourage individuals to continue to protect and enhance our natural and cultural heritage. The nest of eggs symbolize our future cultures. The eggs represent the new life, the new beginnings. As with the Paragon Falcon, we, too, are given the responsibility to nurture and protect the coming future. We, as people, must stand together in order to teach our cultural heritage, which we will carry on to the future generations. Neglect can be a result of a broken egg, easily eaten for breakfast, without a thought. Will we deprive the next generation of their right to a culture? A heritage not had results in no culture. What we do today will reflect for tomorrow. Many of our citizens have been recognized over the city over the past nineteen years for a total of twenty-nine award recipients. And the list is up there for you. It's hard to read, but you can see it. I would like to thank council for having this award and acknowledging the role of culture in enhancing the lives of citizens of our city. Tonight, we do have some of the recipients with us. If you guys could just stand up, you'll see who you still have with us. Our recipient will receive a framed certificate and a personal award with the engraved markings of Stone Cradle. And that's what you see up on the screen there now. So our recipient for the 2018 Community Recognition Award for Performing Arts is Sandra Houston. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Sandra. Sandra has been involved in the arts in St. Marie for fifty years. I was supposed to change it. The thing says almost fifty years. She says it's now November, so it's now fifty years. And through her work, she has been, had a lasting impact on our community. Sandra has been a stabilizing force and has been involved with many initiatives during the development stages, and one that she works hard at is Over the Rainbow Children's Entertainment Series. Sandra has spent countless hours volunteering and has been involved as the past Chair of the Quanta Regional Drama Festival, a member of the Theatre Ontario Board, and the head of the Community Theatre Committee there for two years, joint founder of Pole Chain Theatre, and a producer of many productions, including Missing. She is currently on the board of the Sioux Theatre Workshop, the Sioux Community Theatre Centre, and the El Goma Film Society. Sandra has served as the Executive Director of the Arts Council of Sioux-St. Marie District for six years, from 2007 to 2013. She drove membership up to over seven hundred, a catalyst to support many youth innovations, including the Sioux Zombie Walk, Art in the Parking Lot, which is sort of a takeover of Art in the Park, and, yeah, the Art in the Park from the Arts Council. Sandra is also the 2015 recipient of Leading Women Building Communities Award, and in 2013 received the Medal of Merit from the city. Congratulations, Sandra, the recipient of the Community Recognition Performing Award. Sandra's very shy. She doesn't want to say anything. So, Mr. Mayor, she's just going to come and get her award from you.
Okay. Chris, if you want to come around, too, because we can both give this to her? Okay. Oh, he's going to say something after all.
I just want to say for all the seniors out there, I started working at the Arts Council when I was sixty years old. At seventy years old, I became a priest in our church, and I have been working in the community for fifty years. Seniors, please go out, help, volunteer, wherever you are, whatever you like. Just get out there and do it, and get busy.
So Sandra, before you leave and before we move on, I just want to thank you on behalf of the... It's okay, Sandra. I just want to thank you on behalf of the community at large for all the tremendous work and dedication you've shown for our community. You've made a substantial difference and contribution. I thank you for it.
Under Agenda Item 5.2, Financial Literacy Month, Bill White, Senior Vice President, Member Experience Northern Credit Union, is in attendance.
I spoke to Bill earlier. There he is. Welcome to council, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks so much for allowing me to be here on behalf of Northern Credit Union. I'm here to thank you specifically for the declaration you have approved. It really helps in raising the awareness around the importance of financial literacy. Other northern municipalities have stepped up with these types of declarations in support of Financial Literacy Month. And as part of our efforts, Northern Credit Union commissioned public opinion research among young people in Ontario, and we recently just received the results. There was some good news and some bad news, like normal. In general, we need to do more to help young people become more financially literate. Across the province, only thirty-eight percent of respondents consider themselves knowledgeable about finances. On a positive note, the number was slightly higher for northern Ontario, with respondents at forty-six percent. But there's a lot more we can do. At Northern, we got a full month of activities planned, including classroom sessions for high school students, scholarships, and online financial literacy game, and lots of educational resources developed for high school student, uh, school students specifically. I know you have a busy agenda, so I just want to thank you again for adopting this official declaration of November as Financial Literacy Month. It is an important issue, and we certainly appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. I can read the declaration now. So whereas the Government of Canada, through the Office of Canada's Financial Literacy Leader and the Financial Consumer Agency of Canada, has designated November as Financial Literacy Month, whereas an understanding of personal banking and finance is an important life skill for young people, including those that are living in northern Ontario, whereas Northern Credit Union is committed to serving the needs of northern communities, including developing and delivering financial literacy programs for young people, particularly during the month of November. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux-St. Marie, hereby proclaim, pronounce the week of November, the month of November 2018, as Financial Literacy Month, and urge all residents to partake in and participate in the events of Financial Literacy Month. Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.3, YMCA Peace Week. Joel Roswell, Chair, YMCA Board of Directors, Anne Markula, CFO and interim CEO, Sioux-St. Marie YMCA, and Carly Smith, Youth Outreach Worker, YMCA Youth Gambling Awareness Program, are in attendance.
Welcome to council, Joel, Carly.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, and guests, the World Alliance of YMCA says, peace has many dimensions. It is not only a state of relationships among nations. We cannot expect to live in a world of peace if we are unable to live in peace with those close to us, even those who differ from us. The responsibility for peace begins with each person, in relationships with family and friends, and extends to the community life and national activities. So what does peace have to do with the YMCA? The YMCA believes that just as health is more than the absence of illness, peace is more than the absence of violence and conflict. Peace is the presence of conditions like fairness, inclusion, empathy, security, and respect for diversity. Peace is also the ongoing work of building and rebuilding these conditions. When people are included in their communities and have opportunities to be heard, contribute, and shape the way things work, they tend to relate peacefully to others. When people are excluded, feel misunderstood or frustrated, and can't find ways to change these conditions, a community's peace is undermined. Peace is a foundation of healthy communities where everyone is included and feels like they belong. YMCA Peace Week is a time when we celebrate the presence of peace in our communities and reflect on the peace-building work that happens all year, both inside and outside the YMCA. Peace building is core to YMCA's values and is part of our work year-round. It can be local, international, or both. Sometimes peace-building work means sharing ideas and resources across borders. Sometimes it simply means reaching out to build connections and understand each other better. Ultimately, YMCA Peace Week calls people to build community, act for peace. When we act for peace, together we build a stronger and healthier community by promising a sense of belonging, fostering empathy, embracing pluralism, and addressing the social determinants of health. A world with good outcomes on all social determinants, including things like education, social equity, and child development, would be a peaceful world. We know that voting, volunteering, charitable giving, and other behaviors that shape healthy communities are all associated with a strong sense of community belonging. All year round, YMCA's promote diversity and social inclusion in our programs and facilities. Peace Week is an opportunity to reflect on, celebrate, and advance this work. Every year, a highlight of the Sioux-St. Marie YMCA Peace Week celebration is the multicultural potluck. We invite the community to register at the YMCA, and on Tuesday, November twentieth, at 5:00 PM, bring your favorite dish to share. Thank you to the Sioux-St. Marie area local immigration partnerships for their continued support of the celebration of foods from around the world. In keeping with the YMCA's in Canada Statement of Reconciliation, our focus this year will be on the dedication to reconciliation with indigenous peoples and communities in Canada. It is reflective of the YMCA Federation's commitment to fostering a sense of belonging for all and its values of inclusiveness, accountability, and collaboration. YMCA's Federation in Canada Statement of Reconciliation was unanimously approved by all YMCA's in Canada and strengthens, strengthens our dedication to reconciliation with indigenous peoples and communities in Canada. It is reflective of YMCA Federation's commitment to fostering a sense of belonging for all and its values of inclusiveness, accountability, and collaboration. YMCA's in Canada have a commitment to building healthy communities through the power of belonging, communities that are safe and vibrant with a strong economy and a sustainable environment, communities within Canada that demonstrates leadership in improving the health of all people, respect for diversity and pluralism, combating inequality, protecting its most vulnerable, and nurturing the people, or the potential of young people. Together with our community partners, including the Kiwinus Club of Lakeshore, we are hosting a Breakfast for Peace with keynote speaker, Ontario Regional Chief Roseanne Archibald, on November thirtieth at the Marconi Cultural Centre in Banquet Hall. Ontario Regional Chief Roseanne Archibald of Tewa Tagamoo Nation is a calm, respectful, and heart-centered leader who has over twenty-five years' experience in politics. Roseanne has dedicated all her adult life to serving and striving to create a better quality of life and future for First Nations people. She represents a generational change, bringing diplomacy and encouraging unity in the First Nations political system while breaking down barriers since the start of her political career, having been the first woman and the youngest. As Ontario Regional Chief, she remains dedicated to empowering women and youth and seeking community-based solutions that encourage capacity-building, leadership development, and resiliency. The breakfast will include the presentation of the YMCA Peace Medal, which is presented to peacemakers who challenge and inspire others to pursue acts for peace. YMCA's across Canada present the YMCA Peace Medal to individuals or groups who, without any special resources, status, wealth, or position, demonstrate a commitment to the values of peace through contributions made within their local, national, and global community. The 2018 Sioux-St. Marie Peace Medal recipient is Theodore Sorette for being a fierce advocate for the rights of both indigenous people and for 2SLGBTQ+. Thank you to our sponsors for making this possible. We look forward to hosting this very important Breakfast for Peace. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do have a declaration here, Counsel Myers. Did you want to comment before or after the declaration? The proclamation, sorry. No, go ahead, and then I'll read the proclamation.
Thank you. Joel, don't run away on me there. I just wanted to, it's not lost on me that twelve years ago, when I was at my first council meeting, the late, great Mayor John Roswell, your dad, was sitting in this council chambers, and here I am tonight, my last council meeting, and the baton has been passed, the apple has fallen very close to the tree, and thank you for what you're doing in our community, Joel.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay, Joel, you can stand there while I read the proclamation, if you like.
Whereas Sioux-St. Marie YMCA is a charity focused on empowering youth, families, and communities through a variety of programs that respond to everyone's needs. Our focus on inclusiveness and accessibility means we serve people of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities through all stages of life. Whereas the Sioux-St. Marie YMCA aims to provide and support every individual in our community with opportunities for personal growth, civic involvement, and leadership development. Mirroring diversity and inclusion, the YMCA welcomes everyone regardless of their background, experiences, or circumstances. Whereas YMCA Peace Week is an opportunity for everyone to take part in peaceful activities from a local and global perspective. A highlight of the week is the Peace Medal Ceremony, where the YMCA awards peace medals to remarkable individuals or groups who, through their actions, without any special resources, demonstrate a commitment to the values of peace through contributions made within their local, national, or global community. And whereas we must create a society of citizens where peace is a reality for everyone regardless of age, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status, the YMCA believes peace is more than the absence of violence and conflict. Peace is the ongoing work of building and rebuilding conditions of fairness, inclusion, empathy, security, and respect for diversity. We all have the ability to make our communities safe and peaceful through these efforts. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenciano, as Mayor of the city of Sioux-St. Marie, to hereby proclaim November seventeenth to November twenty-fourth, 2018, as YMCA Peace Week in the city of Sioux-St. Marie, and encourage everyone of all ages, backgrounds, and walks of life to participate in the special events and activities planned in celebration of Peace Week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.4, Frank Phone Immigration Week, Patricia Loftstrom is in attendance.
Hello, bonsoir. I have it in French and in English, if you don't mind.
Nope, go ahead.
Merci Monsieur le Maire, Provenciano, Member du Conseil, et chers invités. En deux-mille-dix-neuf, la ville de Sioux-St. Marie a reçu des fonds d'immigration, réfugiés et citoyenneté canadiennes, IRCC, afin d'établir un partenariat local en immigration, pli. Une initiative dont le mandat est de guider la communauté dans un processus pour devenir plus accessible aux nouveaux arrivants. Un portail en immigration que nous connaissons sous Discover de Sioux a été créé et est toujours disponible comme un point central d'information pour en apprendre davantage sur Sioux-St. Marie mais aussi pour aider et guider nos nouveaux arrivants qui désirent et qui souhaitent s'installer ici à Sioux-St. Marie. En deux-mille-quatre, le Sioux Community Career Information Centre ouvert ses portes aux nouveaux arrivants afin de les accueillir et de leur offrir des services d'établissement. Et le SCICC, les acronymes, est reconnu comme un bûcher unique pour les services d'établissement, d'immigration et d'emploi pour tous les nouveaux arrivants. Son équipe travaille directement avec les nouveaux arrivants. Elle fournit une formation spécifique aux bénévoles de la collectivité et aussi aux membres de la collectivité pour les appuyer. De plus, ils organisent également de nombreuses activités et des événements multiculturels ouverts à tous les membres de la communauté. Nous sommes tous d'accord que célébrer une grande diversité culturelle est une expérience incroyable et nous pouvons le faire, imaginez-vous donc ici même à Sioux-St. Marie. Comme annoncé dans le plan d'action du Premier ministre pour les langues officielles 2018-2023, l'un de leurs objectifs est d'accroître l'immigration francophone d'au moins cinq pour cent au Canada et en Ontario et d'inciter les nouveaux arrivants à s'installer autre part que dans les grands centres. Grâce à ce plan, l'objectif actuel de IRCC est d'accroître les services d'établissement francophones. Ils collaborent donc avec les collectivités du Nord de l'Ontario afin de bâtir leur capacité, d'améliorer les services d'établissement en français, et aussi de les aider à développer des collectivités accueillantes. En octobre dernier, le coordinateur par intérim du partenariat local d'immigration pli, Sean, et les membres de la communauté francophone ont participé à une consultation d'IRCC et un forum en immigration organisé par le réseau du Nord à Sudbury. Nous avons un semaine pour nous situer ce soir. Le coordinateur du réseau du Nord de Sudbury donc, qui a conduit pour être ici avec nous aujourd'hui, merci Christian. Le sujet de la discussion était très constructif et c'était surtout pour la construction de la communauté francophone accueillante, la façon dont le réseau du Nord peut nous appuyer et comment IRCC peut aussi nous appuyer et nous aider dans le processus. À Sioux-St. Marie, nous sommes choisis d'avoir accès à des services en français et bilingue qui sont déjà établis. Nous avons des écoles francophones et diversies, des services sociaux, ainsi que des entrepreneurs dans le secteur privé. Toutefois, nous avons aussi réalisé que pour être vraiment une communauté accueillante, nous devons aller au-delà des services bilingues. Nous devons développer et renforcer les capacités de nos organismes de langue française afin qu'elle puisse subvenir aux besoins des nouveaux arrivants francophones. Par conséquent, un comité directeur a été mis sur pied et s'emploie à obtenir les efforts nécessaires pour poursuivre cette initiative, et c'est avec enthousiasme que nous travaillons avec la ville de Sioux-St. Marie et la communauté dans l'atteinte d'un de ces objectifs à augmenter sa population à cent mille résidents par deux-mille-trente-sept. Ensemble, nous atteindrons ce but en devenant une ville plus accueillante afin de mieux attirer et retenir les nouveaux arrivants. C'est du quatre au dix novembre qu'aura lieu la sixième semaine nationale de l'immigration francophone. Nous aimerions saisir cette occasion de sensibilisation en demandant à la ville de Sioux-St. Marie d'accueillir à bras ouverts les efforts de la communauté en proclamant cette semaine la première semaine nationale de l'immigration francophone à Sioux-St. Marie. Aussi ce soir, nous vous invitons tous à nous rejoindre pour une célébration qui aura lieu à solo tratoria de dix-sept heures trente à vingt heures trente. Merci. I think it goes faster in English. I'm just not sure why, but I think so. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Provenciano, Member of councils, and invited guests. In 2009, the city of Sioux-St. Marie received funding from the Immigration, Refugee, and Citizenship Canada, IRCC, to establish a local immigration partnership, an initiative whose mandate is to lead the community in becoming more accessible to newcomers. An immigration portal, that we all know under Discover de Sioux, was created and is still available as a central point of information to learn about Sioux-St. Marie and also to, as a guide for newcomers who wish to come and settle here in town. In 2004, the Sioux Community Information and Career Center, SCICC, opened their doors to newcomers where they were welcomed and assisted in receiving settlement services. The SCICC is known as a one-stop shop for settlement, immigration, and employment services for all newcomers. The Sioux Career Information Center teamwork directly with the newcomers, provide relevant training to volunteers and the community members. They also host... They also host many multicultural activities and events for all community members to enjoy and to take part in. We all agree that celebrating the wide diversity and culture in Sault Ste. Marie is truly an amazing community experience. As outlined in the Prime Minister Action Plan for Official Languages 2018-2023, one of their goals is to increase Francophone immigration by 5% in Canada and Ontario, and to encourage newcomers to settle in less populated areas other than the major centers. Through this plan, the IRCC's current focus is to increase Francophone settlement services. They are working with northern Ontario communities to build their capacities in improving Francophone settlement services and assist them to develop welcoming communities. This past October, the Local Immigration Partnership interim coordinator, Sean, a member of the Francophone community, participated in an IRCC consultation forum in Sudbury. The forum was hosted by the Réseau du Nord, which is the French version of the Lip here in Sault Ste. Marie. Tonight, we are blessed to have Christian, which is their coordinator, to support us in our initiative. Thank you, Christian. The discussion topic was the building of welcoming Francophone communities and how they can assist with the process. In Sault Ste. Marie, we are fortunate to have many bilingual and French services already established, such as French and French immersion schools, social services, and private businesses sector. However, we recognize that truly to be a welcoming community, we need to move beyond just bilingual services, and we need to strengthen Francophone organizations' capacity to support the needs of French-speaking newcomers. As a result, a steering committee has been established and is working towards obtaining the necessary funding to go ahead with this initiative. We look forward to working with the city of Sault Ste. Marie and the community in reaching its goal of increasing its population to 100,000 residents by 2037. Together, we can achieve this goal by becoming a more welcoming city to better attract and retain newcomers. November 4th to the 10th will be the sixth National Francophone Immigration Week. We would like to seize this opportunity to raise this awareness by asking the city of Sault Ste. Marie to embrace the community's immigration efforts and proclaiming this week as Sault Ste. Marie's first National Francophone Immigration Week. Also tonight, we invite you to join us for a celebration at Solo Trattoria from 5:30 to 8:30.
Thank you. I have a proclamation here.
And I do have a nice small group, we're small, but we are very dynamic.
Yes, you are. So whereas, let me read the proclamation, Councilor, and then you can clap. Whereas National Francophone Immigration Week is celebrated throughout Canada with the slogan "One Language, One Thousand Accents." And whereas taking note with appreciation that Immigrations, Refugees, and Citizenship Canada strongly believes that attracting, integrating, and retaining French-speaking immigrants outside Quebec contributes to enhancing the quality of communities by strengthening Canada's linguistic duality, increasing diversity within the communities, provinces, and territories. Whereas considering the relation between French-speaking immigrants and the vitality of the Francophone community and the community of Sault Ste. Marie at large, and whereas bearing in mind the positive impact that French-speaking immigrants have and have had on the city of Sault Ste. Marie, now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim November 4th to November 10th, 2018, as National Francophone Immigration Week in the city of Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this brings us to the consent portion of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I think Counselor Shoemaker had something to want to mention.
Counselor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 6.4 I'm in conflict on is the, one of the parties involved is a client of my law firm.
Okay. Zoning wallis terrorists and farewell terrorists? Oh, I think I had declared a conflict on that too previously, Counselor, Mr. Clerk.
Okay.
I didn't vote on that when it was before City Council. Okay, so we will pull that from consent, so it can be dealt with separately. Counselor Grandinetti?
Could we pull item 610, please? The Tranberg &amp; Sun item?
We can. So 610 is pulled from consent. So we'll deal with consent with 6.4 removed and 610 removed. Anything on consent, Council?
Can we also pull 6.5?
We can.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so are there matters on consent then? Nope, so we'll move the consent agenda, Mr. Clerk, with the exception of 6.4, 6.5, and 6.10?
A motion by Counselors Fadda and Myers, resolve that all items listed under date 2018 11/05, Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda and Addendum, be approved as recommended, save and accept 6.4, 6.5, and 6.10.
All in favor? Carried. Okay, we'll deal with 6.4 first. Who is the acting mayor this month?
Counselor Hollingsworth. Item 6.4, zoning 248 wallis terrorists and 292 farewell terrorists, O M B. Report of the solicitor is on the agenda, and a motion by Counselors Fadda and Hall, I'll use Counselor Myers, resolve that the report of the solicitor dated 2018 11/05 concerning zoning 248 wallis terrorists and 292 farewell terrorists be received as information.
Yep. All in favor?
We'll have a question.
Yep. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. I have a question for our city solicitor. Under this case, does the appellate have another chance to put in another appeal?
Through you, Ms. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Nero, at this time, there is no further option for this property owner. The appeal was dismissed. An opportunity in the correspondence from the tribunal was sent, along with that decision, to offer 15 further days for further information to be received, and nothing further was submitted. So it's concluded at this stage.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
You're welcome. No, any other questions on this matter? No? Then all in favor? Oppose? Carried. Moving on.
Madam Acting Mayor, we'll have you introduce. Item 6.5, Downtown Traffic Study, Notice of Completion. Motion by Counselors Bruny and Myers, resolve that the report of the Director of Engineering concerning the downtown traffic study, Notice of Completion, be received as information.
So, Counsel, before we proceed with this matter, Counsel, I just want to give you some context from a general review's perspective. When it came to a general review, I asked the same question a number of you asked, is isn't this something that should be on the next council's agenda? And it should and is going to be. The reason why it's on today's is because it has to be posted to trigger a period, the way that the assessment works. So it's closed, and if it's posted, we, this is an information report to us saying, hey, we're done it, so we're posting that we're done it, and that triggers the whole period where somebody could take issue with it. But there will be a discussion of the next council in December about this matter. So it wasn't put on here for our debate and discussion, because it is a substantive matter. It was put on to note, give us notice of the end of the study, and give the public notice of that, and that triggers a 30-day period, I believe, or, and if we did want to move ahead, staff needed to trigger that period to be in a position to do the work for next season to move ahead. But rest assured for those of you returning that we're asking, this will be on your December meeting for discussion. So I don't know if that change is pulling from consent or what you want to know about that, but we weren't here tonight to debate the number of lanes, because that properly is a debate of the next council. So with that information, can we just proceed with that matter? Mr. Clerk?
That would bring us to item 610.
Do we have to pass that, because it was taken off consent?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yes, you'd have to read that motion.
I did.
Okay, all in favor? Carried.
Next item would be 610, Chris Tranberg &amp; Sun Limited, 1025 Second Line East, a report of the acting city solicitor is attached for the consideration of council. Counsel, this is approved by bylaw. Bylaw 2018 to 10, agreement Tranberg &amp; Sun Limited, 1025 Second Line East, and a motion by Counselors Fadda and Myers, resolve that bylaw 2018 to 10, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement between the city and Chris Tranberg &amp; Sun Limited, Gary Tranberg, and Audra May Tranberg, to compensate for the impact to 1025 Second Line East, as a result of construction work conducted by the city, be passed and open council this 5th day of November 2018.
Counselor Grandinetti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't support this in caucus, and I can support this now, as I think the city taxpayers shouldn't foot the bill for this. There's nothing against, nothing personal against all parties, the engineer involved, but I believe that the engineer should cover the cost of this. As it was his oversight.
Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I spoke to Mr. Elliott earlier today. We did have quite a good amount of information on this in caucus, as it was a legal matter, as is appropriate. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Australia if he could just comment on it again, because the issue around is that this is something that the costs would have been incurred regardless, it's just a case of when it would have been done. In fact, when we do a major road project, as we did, the impact on a property such as this, it doesn't happen often, but it does occur, and this is not the first time this sort of thing's ever occurred. So could we just ask Mr. Elliott to please expand on that? Through you, Mr. Mayor, just so that there's no confusion in the public about this.
Do you understand the question there, Mr. Elliott?
I think so, Mr. Mayor. This happens occasionally on projects. In fact, it happens regularly in a much smaller degree. We are involved quite often, as you can well imagine, with restoring front yards and driveways, et cetera, with residents. In this case, it's a commercial entrance on a hill on the Trans-Canada Highway, and we expected to spend considerable amount of money to try to address this issue, but it was very complicated because there's additional property associated with a configuration to make transports able to egress and access the property. So I'm fairly confident, Mr. Mayor, that the amount of money that's being, the upset limit that's suggested here is quite in line with what we would have expended in the first place had we tried to design this in the first instance. So that's my encouragement to council, that this is not additional money that's happened because this is planned out this way.
Anything further, Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, as I said, I don't want to be left in some perception of the public that this is some unusual occurrence of spending some money foolishly. It's money that, and it's an upset limit, as Mr. Elliott just mentioned, and receipts and so on will be verified, and it may not even come to that total amount. So I just wanted that clarified. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Elliott.
Counsel Fadda?
Just a question for legal. If this property were strictly, solely a residential property, would they still have this avenue that they're, there obviously seems to be getting traction on? Would they have the same option if the property was strictly residential?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Fadda. In each situation, as Mr. Elliott has stated, we would look at how the property was used, and our obligation as a municipality, if we do work on a person's land, is to restore that use of land to what had existed prior to the city's use, the city's work on the land. So depending on the nature of the private homeowner, that's one situation here, there is a business being run there, so we, again, have an obligation to restore it to that
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
My concern with this is the fact that this is primarily a residential property. It happens to have a commercial tenant, so the tenant represents a fraction of what the property is primarily used for. So this property could sell next month, and it could be sold to a family that simply lives there. We're dealing with this property because it happens to have a tenant, a commercial tenant. So the issue of the driveway and the access by large commercial vehicles is all being looked at from the point of view that this is a residential property that happens to have a commercial tenant. And for that reason, also, I cannot support this. It's not, it's not right, and it's not, it's not fair in terms of the expenditure that's being asked here. If it were strictly residential, which it could very well be, it sells to somebody, it could become strictly residential, we wouldn't be having this conversation. It happens to have a tenant on there, and it seems like this tenant is controlling this whole approach to this property, and for that, I do not agree, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? Matters carried?
This brings us to Section 8 of the agenda. 8.1, thank you to outgoing counselors, a motion by Counselors Shoemaker and Christian. Whereas Steve Butland, Susan Myers, Judy Hoopinen, Lou Turkle, Frank Fadda, Joe Kropodich, and Ozzy Grandinetti have served the city of Sault Ste. Marie with passion and zeal. And whereas the environment issues, to tourism, to specific issues, to labor issues, to animal protection, to taxes, and the cost of living, each has been a champion of causes near and dear to them and to their constituents over their term of office. And whereas among the outgoing counselors, there is a collective 83 years of experience at council. Now therefore be it resolved that council thank the outgoing counselors for their service to their wards and to the city as a whole, and to wish them all possible success in their next endeavors.
Okay, so, Counsel, we have this motion in front of us, and what we're going to do is, we're not affording all of the counselors sitting here with the opportunity to speak tonight. Certainly, if you wanted to speak to the motion, you could please speak briefly to it, but we are affording all of the counselors who are not returning to the next council an opportunity to speak. So what we'll do is, Counsel Shoemaker, we'll give you a chance to briefly speak to your motion. Counsel Christian, if you wanted to offer a few words. If anybody else wanted to briefly speak to the motion, we would do that, and then we're going to hear from all of our counselors who are not returning to be with us, and we'll proceed that way. So Counsel Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I started on council here four years ago, and at the time, didn't know any of my colleagues here in the chamber. And, you know, I've, over four years, disagreed with some, many of them. At times, very passionate disagreement on the issues, but I have found them all to be very thoughtful, very dedicated to moving the city forward. And agree or not, there was never any question that they loved the city and that they were trying to move it forward. And specific to Counselor Butland, former Mayor Butland and former Member of Parliament Butland, I've called him on a number of occasions to seek advice, and he's always been generous and forthcoming with his, with his knowledge and historical perspective. And I, he jokes with me when I call him that he's my mentor. And I would just say that if, over my time of serving the city, I can accomplish for my constituents half as much as he's accomplished for his, in his time serving them, they will be very well served. So I thank all the outgoing counselors for their service. Thank you.
Counsel Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of Counselor Shoemaker's thoughts. I want to congratulate and thank all of my council partners who are moving on. The job of a counselor, as we all know, is not easy, it's challenging, and I respect anybody, especially what we've come through. I respect those that put their name forward seeking public office. We deal with a lot of issues, as Counselor Shoemaker said, we don't always agree, but I don't think there's any doubt in any of our minds that we all approach it with a sincerity and a love for our community. So for that, I'm grateful that I've had the opportunity to work with all of you, and I wish you all the best, and I hope we stay in touch. wish you all the best and I hope we stay in touch. If afforded the opportunity, I'd probably talk for about fifteen or twenty minutes about councillor Butland and what he's meant to me. God knows I practice. He makes me do it every Saturday when we meet. But nevertheless, all joking aside, it's a particular pleasure for me to have worked with Steve and we'll have our conversation in private.
Sure. Do any other councillors want to offer any comments at this time? Well, you're going to get to speak, Counsel Fatta. Yeah, yeah. You're one of the ones that we're going to go to in a second. So all, councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. A lot of positive comments have already been said, but I just want to reiterate, if I may say, I've only been on council for two and a half years, but the personalities around this table, the life experiences, really does help to move the city in the right direction. So the bottom line is that those councillors that are moving on, we know that all of us will be reaching out to you, to all of you, for further advice and further comments. And I know that all of you are going to continue to be active in this community because you do have a passion for the community. But if I may say, and just reiterate it one more time, your advice, your guidance behind the scenes is very much appreciated. And thank you.
Okay, so any other comments? Okay, so councillor Grandinetti, did you have anything you wanted to say? We'll start with you.
Yes, I do. First of all, to the six of you that asked me to come back to council, I really, really appreciate it, especially my seatmate beside me. Folks, this guy's got political future, whether, seriously, whether it's going to be mayor, MP, or MPP, this guy's going somewhere in life. Councillor Butland, you've been awesome. Ever since I first met you many, many years ago, we were getting ready to fly out to Italy last minute. We needed our passports. Who do we call? Steve Butland. Drove around in a little white. I believe it was a Dodge Horizon. You've been, you've been great all along. Councillor Myers? The city's loss is the school board's gain. And for those of you on the, on the public school board, I ask you to allow more time on your meetings now that councillor Myers has been elected. Thank you all. Thank you very much. And thank you to staff. You guys have been great. Especially you, Larry. But I still have another month to give you a headache, so more headaches.
Not quite, Ozzy, not quite.
Oh, three, three and a half weeks.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have councillor Hoopinen, and she isn't here, but she sent me something that she asked me to read to you. So you'll excuse when I'm referring to myself because I'm obviously reading it in her voice.
Mayor Provinzano in council, I'd like to begin by saying it has been an honor and privilege to serve on this council for the past four years. I will truly miss being part of a great group of people that all have the same common desire to help our city be as prosperous as it can be. I sincerely believe that this mayor and council has made our city a better place today than it was four years ago. I'd like to acknowledge councillor Butland for his many years of service and his true dedication to our city and his leadership over the years. I wish councillor Butland a very happy and healthy retirement. I'd also like to acknowledge councillor Myers for her many years of service as city councillor. Susan was a wonderful mentor to me when I first took office four years ago. She helped me become familiar with all the protocols related to my new role. Thank you, Susan. I truly appreciate your time, your attention. It was a pleasure to work alongside councillor Turkle, who dedicated time serving on the AMO board and keeping us in the loop with the provincial updates. Good luck, councillor Turkle. Thank you councillor Fatta for bringing your expertise to council meetings and always asking tough questions on behalf of your constituents. Congratulations to Paul Christian for your reelection, which I believe is well deserved. I was always impressed with your articulate questions and comments. When you speak, people listen. Keep up the good work. We need councillors like you on board. I wish councillor Joe Kropodich the very best in his quote "life" end quote after council. Joe and his wife Sherry are longtime friends and I consider it a privilege to have worked alongside Joe over the past four years. Thanks, Joe, for helping me with my cantankerous iPad that always caused me grief at our Monday night council meetings. Congratulations councillor Hollingsworth. I know you will do well. Your passion for our city shines brightly. Congratulations to my ward mate councillor Shoemaker on your reelection for another term. Great campaign. It has been a pleasure working with you, representing residents in Ward Three. I truly admire your forward thinking and your tenacity on issues that are important to our community. Thank you for all that you, thank you for all that you do. Keep those resolutions coming. This is not me. This is councillor Hoopinen. Sorry, I can't be there to second a few. Congratulations to councillor Bruny and councillor Nero in your nomination to represent Ward Four. What a great team. Residents in Ward Four are very fortunate. I wish councillor Grandinetti all the best in his future efforts. It was great working with you on council. Congratulations, Mayor Provinzano, in winning a second term. Your guidance and leadership helped us navigate through some tough times over the past four years and I commend you for that. I wish you all the best in the next four years. It appears you have an enthusiastic incoming council to help our city be the best it can be. My farewell to all the great staff at City Hall. It was an absolute pleasure meeting everyone. I wish everyone all the best for a successful council term.
So that was from councillor Hoopinen. That was very nice. So we'll just keep going down this side. Councillor Kropodich?
Thank you, Mayor Provinzano. And I want to say equally it was quite an honor to be able to serve and work along with you and with the rest of council as well. It's been an honor working on behalf of the constituents and the municipality with Ward Six. And I'm really looking forward to my next phase in life. I have a grandson now and my wife and I have been spending quite a bit of time with him. I'm going to be going back to my, while I'm going to be going back, I'm still going to be doing my full-time job at United Stillworkers, be working along with them. I'm sixty-two now. I plan on retiring when I'm sixty-five, so I plan on spending a whole lot more time with my family on the weekends and during my vacation and things like that. But just once again, it's been an absolute honor working with each and every one of you. And it takes a big commitment from each of you. Going forward, every one of yous know what you have to do to make everything happen. With all the complaints that come in and everything you've got going, you've got a, you've got a heavy workload. And I wish every one of yous all success going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Councillor Fatta?
Mayor?
Thank you, councillor Fatta.
I guess one thing that I have to say on the onset is that the three-term limit held true, even though, even though it wasn't, it wasn't official. So in a way, there's, there's something to be said about that. Maybe, that was my resolution, wasn't it? First of all, I just wrote a few words here, but first of all, what I want to do is thank all the fine people that I had the opportunity to work with, both on council and staff. You know, I will always remember each and every one of you. And going back, there's a few that I'd like to make reference to, sort of notables, John Roswell, of course, Frank Manzo, Joe Fortezi. I'd like to make reference to Don McConnell, to Don Elliott, and Bill Freiberger, and of course, Steve Butland. I mean, I just mentor, I've been using that word for how many years. I'd like to give special mention to my ward mate, Marci Bruny. I think we worked well together and though we didn't always vote the same, I know there was always a mutual respect and for that, I thank you. The city will experience some challenges during these next four years, but I hope and expect that there will be a healthy relationship between council and of course, our two Members of Parliament, Terry Sheen and Ross Romano. I certainly look forward to, because we've got a great team there and I really believe that it's got to be all hands on deck and we certainly, I certainly want to see good communication, good dialogue, and I'm sure that with Mayor Provinzano at the helm, that will be the case. Going forward, I remain, I remain very optimistic. I'm kind of curious to see the direction of this council with two less councillors, five new members. We have incumbents that I believe will show strong and steady, and steady leadership. So I feel optimistic and I hope that all of us that are now leaving today feel the same way, because I really think that if we're all realizing that the glass is half full rather than dwelling on the fact that it might be half empty, if we remain optimistic, I think we'll all be part of a success story, you know, moving forward. Finally, I'd like to thank one person who made it possible for me to be around for these past three terms. Her and I were the campaign team and without her, I would never have succeeded. Thanks to my wife Pina for all that you did. Now we can walk away together. I did hear her whispering in the background recently saying, "Thank God." Much success to this next council. The fine people of Sault Ste. Marie counting on you to lead. Let's hope that we don't disappoint them. Thank you to all those who supported me and the good wishes that I received after the election. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Fatta. So councillor Myers, we're going to go to you and we're going to leave the most senior for the last comments.
Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding. In all your ways acknowledge Him and He shall direct your paths. This is three verses from Proverbs that have been my life verses and they've certainly borne true for me. Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, friends in the community, and members of the media. On May first of this year, when I filed to run as a trustee for Algoma District School Board in Ward Two, a member of the media said to me, "You will miss this," referring to city council. I knew in my heart that was correct. I also knew that for me, it was time to move over and encourage others to step up and make their own run for public service through seeking to become a member of city council. I wanted to continue to serve the community, but in a different way. I was pleased to see many new candidates running in every ward in the city. This is a very healthy sign. It speaks to the level of engagement and commitment many individuals have and it speaks to a readiness to make a contribution towards the further development of this naturally gifted community we all love. I want to acknowledge all candidates who did run in the municipal election for city council and for school board trustee positions. It is not easy to put yourself out there in the public and be vulnerable to scrutiny and examination. Doing so comes at a cost that goes beyond financial. It takes a toll emotionally and physically. It is hard on your friends, family, supporters, and loved ones, who are often subjected to hearing negative comments about you from those who oppose you for a myriad of reasons. At this time, I want to say thank you to every candidate, whether it was your first time running or you had run before. Thank you for stepping up to the plate. Our community is richer for your effort. I want to especially thank all members of council with whom I have served over these three terms. Friendships have been formed that might not otherwise have come about, and I am richer for that gift. It is my sincere belief that being a member of city council or a school board trustee is a great privilege and a sacred trust held on behalf of all residents of all ages and it's never to be taken for granted. Thank you to the folks of Ward Two who have chosen to continue to give me that opportunity to serve my community now as an Algoma District School Board trustee in Ward Two. As I look back over these twelve years, there are many people I'd like to thank. Clearly, I cannot name each one. However, I am compelled to make some expression of gratitude. First, I do want to thank God for putting the desire in my heart to run for city council and then for giving me the opportunity and the strength to do the job. I said a minute ago, I believe this office is indeed a sacred trust and I am humbled to have been given the task. Next, I want to thank my family and dearest friends who supported me over all twelve years, but particularly in the first campaign. In 2006, I had fifty-one very committed volunteers led by family and dear, dear friends, more than a few of whom are no longer here and gone from our presence far too soon. Last, but by no means least, I want to express my greatest appreciation and heartiest thank you to our city staff. I've had many opportunities to see our staff in action. I've often stated in this council chamber, on occasion when I was addressing staff at a function of some sort, that city staff in its entirety is the wind beneath the wings of the members of city council. When a pothole needs filling, or a neighbor's lawn grass needs cutting, or an unusual amount of snow has plowed a driveway, or a delegation wants to address council, or a transport truck is not following the designated truck route, or drivers are speeding, or a 911 call is made, or our council decides on a special celebration, or a community organization wants a flag raising, and on and on and on and on with hundreds of requests, it is not me or any other member of city council who carries out that task. It is one or more of our dedicated members of the city staff. My message to the new incoming members of city council and even to the re-elected incumbents is to please at all times give our city staff your utmost respect, express your appreciation for their advice and their effort. You do not have to always agree with them on an issue or an approach to resolving a matter, however, I urge you to listen to what they have to say and if you differ, do so with respect. It has been my experience that our city staff care very much about this community and want to serve the residents as best they can. I'll conclude by saying again, it's a privilege to serve as a member of city council. I was the first woman to represent Ward Two and I'm grateful for the opportunity it afforded me to make my contribution as municipal leader. I enjoyed almost every minute of it. I wish you, Mr. Mayor, and all members of this city council and the new council to be inaugurated December third, the richest of God's blessings. I pray you will seek God's wisdom to guide you in your many deliberations to come in this next term. Thank you for your friendship. I will treasure it always.
Thank you, councillor Myers. Councillor Turkle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. How much time do I have?
I'm not going to interrupt you, councillor Turkle.
No, I don't need that long, actually.
So when you get to fifteen minutes, I'm going to stop you. You're good until then. You can clear runway.
What are you good for eighteen years? Yeah. I should have accumulated time.
Well, you do.
You know, when I was elected to Mr. Mayor in the rest of the council in 2000, I didn't know anything about text messaging. What's a Facebook in 2000? And Twitter and iPad, and now I'm considered an expert on it. It's amazing how time flies. This part of my journey is over. It's been an honor and privilege to serve the Ward Four voters. I want to thank you for your continued support over the past eighteen years. It has been quite a ride. Along the way, on this ride, I could not have done it single-handedly. Thank you to the city staff, past and present, for your assistance over the years helping our citizens of Sault Ste. Marie. We have one of the best cities in North America, and I heard that from many, many, many people all over the world. I would like to thank my family members and friends who've helped me over the last few months. I appreciate your continued support, but one person, I have one of those too, councillor Fatta. And I think a lot of people around this table and out in the public know that she's the brains behind the operation. Without her, I wouldn't be here. Sandra P., thank you very much. It has been an honor to serve the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie. I've served with three mayors, Mr. Roswell here, we saw his son here tonight, John Roswell, the late John Roswell, Debbie Amoroso, and you, Mr. Mayor. It's been quite an honor. This part of my journey may be over, but my wife has plans for me. Some extra time to watch my beloved sports team, councillor Bruny, including the Montreal Canadiens, sorry about that, the New York Yankees, and our Sioux Greyhounds, just to name a few. Thank you very much, Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you, Ward Four. We'll see you on radio. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Turkle. Councillor Butland?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and well, well said, colleagues who are departing and those who have spoken and are not departing. I've been in that situation, been fortunate enough to be successful most of the time, but had a couple of rather bitter defeats. The first one, I went into a deep, dark area for several months and the second time was easier, but it's a lot easier to win. I would want to say something profound. I was going to use the word pithy. I said, "Ooh, that's an awful word." But it means the same as profound. I like just throwing it out there. It's pithy. It's a bittersweet night for sure. I keep telling the mayor I'm feeling a bit maudlin and he wants to correct me all the time and say, "You sentimental." Well, I'm going to say, "I'm feeling maudlin tonight, Mr. Mayor." Okay, I've had two careers, thirty-four years of each. It was planned that. It was planned that way when I started, that I wanted 34 and 34, and you say, "Well," and wow, what a gratifying situation, and do the overlap, absolutely, because they deal with people, young, medium, aged, and mature, like myself. And the joy of it is, those that you met when they were young, you meet them later in life. And forgive me, once you start name dropping, you end up in difficulty, but the two most obvious ones are Larry Girardi, who I taught in 19, late 60s, but only one course, I think, every day on Rotary at St. Tricia's School, and then Susan Hamilton Beach, she had the good fortune of having me for two consecutive years, grade 7 and grade 8. And I think she told me one time, she said, "I didn't get your jokes the first year, I started to get them the second." And she just pointed out tonight, the first time I got elected, the class came for the inaugural meeting. She's here tonight for my last meeting, so it's kind of special. The last several months after I announced my retirement, I'd go home every day and tell my wife, "Oh, I think I should stay." People are saying, "You're the greatest ever," and so on and so forth. Well, I'm going to change my mind. Election Day came, I have not received one phone call or one email, so there's a message there. What it's, it's over, it's over. Some of the things I've been involved in, there's some pride there, the Innovation Center, Northern Community Center, energy programs, the solar farm. As I was pulling up tonight, I see those flags, and every time I drive up to City Hall, I say, "That was a good one. I really liked that one." Adding a little levity to this, I was appointed to the Waste Diversion Ontario, which is the environmental committee for the province of Ontario, and I served six years on it, and I started to feel confident. There was the corporate world, the government, and municipal government. And I said to myself, "You know, there are too many plastic bags out there. We need to do something about that." So I said, "Let's address, and let's bring in reusable grocery bags." And they all looked at me and said, "Steve, we've got bigger things and better things to do for the environment." Two years pass, and then now the government brings in, "We're going to bring in reusable grocery bags." And I'm proud to say that Sault Ste. Marie is a big user of reusable bags and less plastic bags, so never be afraid to move forward with things that you don't think are maybe going to be that much appreciated. Those who have made some, have had some influence on me over the years. When I started in the 80s, they called us the Old Boys Club, and Art Galazzi, and Dick Gardi, and Walter Chisholm, and Frank Manzo. They were interesting times. They were, I guess, simpler times, but when we did budgets, we'd do it five, seven days in a row, five, six hours a night. It would go on and on and on. We've come a long way, I think, for the better, but things are much more complicated now. Some other folks, Joe Fortese, who is a friend, I've worked with him on and off, probably more on, for 25 years. Thanks to the mayor, he called him out of retirement, and we're working on the Iran Central Initiative. There'll be some news this week. I have to say, the work will, will continue. I lost my mentor just over a year ago, Dave Barrett, the ex-premier of British Columbia. Passed away, and in 1989, someone said, "Barrett likes you, he thinks you have some potential." So he told me, "I've been, I'm the trade critic, I've seen the world three and four times, I want you to be, represent me." And so, as a result of that, I saw a lot of places in the world that I would not have seen, and what a tremendous experience. So, indeed, I miss him. And finally, I got kudos over the years on the environment. My wife is the consummate environment, environmentalist. She conjoles me, cajoles me, motivates me, encourages me, and at times is very demanding about the smallest of environmental issues in our household. So, any reputation I have out of that began with her. The mayor, he pointed out this evening, we had a rough three years.
I'd said two. I said two.
I said three. And after the two or three years, I say it was three years, I met him in his office, and I said, "You know what? I'm starting to see eye to eye with you on many of the issues." I said, "Have you changed, or have I changed?" And he said, "Maybe both of us have changed, and maybe that is the case." Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think our city, I said a couple meetings ago, we're on the cusp of something big. I really believe that. And I think, Mr. Mayor, with your leadership, I'm confident that we will move forward in a very positive manner. Before I forget, my two colleagues that I've worked with the last 15 years, I guess, of my political career in Ward 1, Jamie Caico and Paul Christian, they're not only colleagues, but they are very close friends. And I really am coming to the end. Thanks for the patience. Councilor Shoemaker mentioned earlier something about me, and yeah, we do call one another from time to time, and two more unlike people, perhaps, certainly from a political spectrum, but we kind of had some sort of unusual friendship. No, it's not unusual, it's just a friendship, but our telephone conversations, you know, well, I've taken some shots from him, and I guess I've given some to him. So I think the idea is camaraderie is important. And I look around the table, and I see people who I like, enjoy, and in political life, there are those that say it's a blood sport, but it need not be. So, thank you, staff, very, very much. We have great staff, and when you spend this long, you kind of form friendships with them as well. Great people. And finally, I love Sault Ste. Marie. It's a great, great city, and I appreciate it very, very much, and it's been my pleasure to serve these past, started 38 years ago, but that's it. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
So, I'm going to wrap up. I want to, when I came down today, I turned to Lisa, and I looked at her, and I said, "It's kind of surprising to me that this is the last meeting of this group." And I don't know where the last four years went. And as I reflected on that over the weekend, I felt very grateful. Felt very grateful to have the opportunity to be part of it, and for the relationships that we developed as a group, and also that we've developed with staff. I want to end with you, so I want to begin by just recognizing staff. It can't be lost on any of us that, as people who have the responsibility to govern the community, we can't do anything without the people that come to work every day. We need them to carry out our direction and our vision, and I think, over the course of this term, they've worked hard to do that. And I want to acknowledge the work that they did, and the effort that they made to listen to what we were saying, and to carry out our direction. To the 12 of you, you've heard me say a number of times over the last few months, that this was a very challenging period for our community. We had a tremendous amount of economic instability. No one knew when we began that oil prices would drop, and Tenares would essentially lay off everybody. No one knew when we began that SR would go into receivership and stop paying taxes for years on end. No one knew when we began where the OLG modernization process was going to land. And on top of managing through all of those things, we managed to do a number of other really important things. And this is the takeaway, is that in a body like this, no one person, no matter what your personality is, or how you can articulate something, or what your ideas are, no one person can move a community forward. Everything we did, we did together. Even if you dissented on something, even if you had a different opinion, when this body decided to do something, it was a decision of this council. And when you reflect on the last four years, this council set out to look at city spending, we created a new budgetary process, we created some really good financial policy, and we reduced city spending. This council set out to deal with some of our broader community challenges, and in the midst of the economic challenge we had, we supported and helped the community itself develop a plan. And then we found the resources and put together a team to work on that. So I feel like the last four years were very productive four years, and it could only have been because of the effort that you made. And I want to recognize that effort and the sacrifices that you make to make the effort. Councilor Myers referred to some of them earlier, and you don't really know what it's like to run for something until you've run for something. And you don't know what it's like to be in the public eye until you've been in the public eye. So I want to recognize as the mayor of the community, and thank you for your work and your effort. I want to wish Ozzy, Judy, Joe, Frank, Susan, Lou, and Steve all the best. I will meet, miss each of you in your own ways, and in different ways. Steve said something during the very first meeting of this council, which struck me as odd at the time, because I wasn't sure where it was coming from. I figured it out after, but he said, it was one sentence, and it was a bit isolated, it was a bit like an island. He said, "We can be friends." And he was right. And I appreciate the leadership that he showed in that regard. I appreciate the extra effort Councilor Myers made from time to time to show leadership and to come and talk to me about issues. And we can leave here today, knowing that for four years, we did our best for our community, and from my perspective, I think we can say we succeeded. Thank you all very much. I'm available to all of you who are not returning, and for those of you who are, I look forward to the next four years, and I will reserve any comment I have about those to December 3rd. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 11, a motion by Councilors Bruny and Hollinsworth, resolve that all bylaws under Item 11 of the agenda, under date 2018-1105, be approved, save and accept 2018-210.
Councilor Shoemaker.
Point 1.
Sorry, didn't realize we didn't vote. All on point 1, all in favor? Carry unanimously. So on the bylaw that the clerk just read, all in favor? Carry.
And a motion by Councilors Bruny and Myers, resolve that this council shall now adjourn.
All in favor? Carry.
Oops, sorry.
I didn't know where I was going to say when I started, but it landed in the right place.
No, it landed right. We're good, and 5 to 6, can't complain.
You left out the part where you like playing basketball, but I'm watching.